I'll order the October 27th, 2025 Planning Board meeting. We have a new Planning Director who will be introducing himself. About the third item on the agenda, I think. We're gonna start with those as usual. Roll the call. John?
All right, Kenny Sullivan.
Here.
Chad McAvery.
Here.
Chris Plum.
Here.
Scott Bookout.
Here.
Andrea Beasley actually called earlier. She's got, um, she had to go to her son's school tonight, so she won't be here. Bill Little.
Present.
Jim Dubavec. He actually called me as well. He's out of, he has, he's out of the state right now. He got called into something for work. So, um, looks like we have a quorum.
Okay, with that, um, as John said, both Andrea and Jim Dubavec have a valid excuse. I recommend someone make a motion to excuse their absence.
I'll make a motion to excuse both Andrea and Jim for tonight's meeting.
Chad McAvery made a motion. Is there a second?
Okay.
Bill, is that you? Bill Little had made the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Next item on the agenda. Um, approval of the minutes from the July 28th meeting, if anybody can remember that, back that far.
Who to accept the minutes as written?
I just have one, um, misspelling in there. That's all just, um, section number three, election officers. They just spelled my name wrong in there. It's all just small.
Well, you would notice that.
I know. Well, not necessarily. It's spelled directly.
I will draw my motion and submit an amended motion to approve the minutes with the one correction uh, in name spelling.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Bill Little with the first, um, no.
Amended.
Yeah, Bill Little with the first and.
Scott Bookout.
Scott Bookout with the second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion is passed. I'll get the name right eventually.
Thank you.
Something new for us here. Next item on the agenda is approval of agenda. That standard?
Yep.
I don't think we've ever done that. We've made adjustments to it, but does everybody approve of the agenda?
Yes.
Would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Chris Plum has made a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Chad McAvery made the second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, now, um, John, it's his first meeting with the town. Been here since June, I think, July?
Uh, September.
September, okay. And I always need training and refreshing because it's something different every, every month than every director we have. So with that, item number five, John?
Thank you. See if I can pull this up on the TV. There you go. Thanks, Greg. All right, so I just wanted to inform the Planning Board about the, uh, just wanted to provide the Planning Board with a brief training presentation on the roles of the Planning Board and Board of Adjustment as well. The training will be utilized as a refresher for Planning Board members that are familiar with the training topics and will give useful information to new Planning Board members. All right. All right, Planning Director information. This tells a little bit about myself. Education awards, Master, Master of Science Criminal Justice, 2013. Executive Certificate in Public Administration, 2025. And I'm currently enrolled in the Doctor of Public Administration degree. I was the 2025 NCAZO zoning official of the year. Experience, I was in the U.S. Army for four years. I did one deployment to Iraq in 2003. I've got about 15 years of management and customer service experience with the private sector. I worked with the Pueblo West Metropolitan District in Pueblo West, Colorado for two years as the Community and Economic Development Manager. I worked for the town of Newport recently for the last two and a half years as Planning Inspection Director and Deputy Town Manager. And I started with the town of Emerald Isle on September 8th.
Welcome. Welcome.
Oh, you said welcome. Thank you.
Don't leave us. Please don't go.
No, I'm planning on staying here.
All right.
Thank you for your service to our country. Thank you for serving Emerald Isle now.
Thank you very much. I, I know Greg's in the back helping us with recording right now, but I also wanted to throw a slide in about him. He's been here, uh, well, let me go over this. So, um, Greg Hayes. So his education awards, Bachelor of Science, Computer Science, Butler University. Experience, he retired after it looks like, what, 26 years at Raxco Software? He's got 26 years of management and customer service, service experience within the private sector. Town of Emerald Isle, he started with the town full-time June 2022. And he has supported five Emerald Isle Planning Directors and four interim Planning Directors. Thanks, Greg.
Thank you, Greg. Appreciate you, man.
You know, people that give little presentations usually put this slide on last, but, um, I wanted to put it, you know, the third or fourth slide in. It's just the contact information. You guys know where I'm located at in the town hall. But in case you need to email me, call my work cell, uh, work cellphone, text me, whatever else has got me and Greg's information on there. As well as the Planning Department's main phone lines. If you call that number on the bottom, it'll ring through the whole Planning Department. All right, Planning Board and Board of Adjustment Powers and Duties. The Planning Board may review and recommend the following. Zoning map amendments, Unified Development Ordinance text amendments, that's the full name of it. Conditional zoning district classifications, preliminary plat, major subdivision, and site-specific vesting plans. The Board of Adjustment, the final, is the final approving authority for variances and special use permits. Here's and decides appeals of denials of site plans, minor subdivision approval, land development permit approval, and administrative decisions. However, the Planning Board and Board of Adjustment cannot exercise these powers without first meeting several requirements. Requirements, Planning Board. To act, the Planning Board must have a quorum. In other words, at least four members must be present. If a quorum is present, there must be a concurring affirmative vote of a majority of the members present and qualified to vote. Board of Adjustment, to act, the Board of Adjustment must have a quorum. They must also have at least four members, uh, that must be present. If a quorum is present, the Board of Adjustment may vote for a variance. The concurring affirmative vote of four fifths of the voting members is required. For anything else, a simple majority vote of the voting members is required for any reversal. Oath. General Statute 168-61 mandates that before entering upon duties of an office, all persons elected or appointed to any city office shall take and subscribe the oath of office. Rules of conduct. A board must adopt rules necessary to conduct its affairs and to establish board organization, procedures and the conduct of its meetings, and post those rules to the town's website. The rules adopted by a board must be in accordance with state law and provisions of this ordinance. Each board must keep accurate minutes of its proceedings and the actions taken in its meetings. When holding quasi judicial hearings, the Board of Adjustment shall keep a full transcript of the meeting and maintain a record of all evidence presented in the course of the hearing. Temporary disqualification. Members shall not vote on any zoning map or Unified Development Ordinance Amendment if the landowner of the property, subject to a rezoning petition or the applicant for a text amendment, is a person with whom the member has a close familial, business, or other assoc- associational relationship. Couldn't say it. Members shall not vote on any advisory or legislative decision regarding a development regulation where the outcome of the matter being considered is reasonably likely to have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact on the member. All these big words. Temporary disqualification. A member of any board exercising quasi judicial functions pursuant to this chapter shall not participate in or vote on any quasi judicial matter in a manner that would violate affected person's constitutional rights to an impartial decision maker. Member having a fixed opinion prior to hearing the matter that is not susceptible to change. Member who has had undisclosed ex parte communications. Member who has a close familial, business, and other associational relationship with an affected person. And a member who has a financial interest in the matter. This is a big one, fixed opinion. As an example, in Crump versus Board of Education of Hickory Administrative School Units, a teacher was dismissed by a school board. The board members stated that they could remain unbiased. However, further evidence showed that they had previously expressed opinions to others that indicated otherwise. The North Carolina Supreme Court held that at the board's hearing, one or more participating members concealed prior knowledge of the allegations and a fixed predisposition against the teacher. The court stated that this denied the teacher due process and awarded the affirmed the $78,000 in damages recoverable from the board. Another example dealing with financial interest. In Dellinger versus Lincoln County, petitioner's conditional use permit was denied by a board of commissioners. One commissioner stated, "I assisted in opposing the solar farm. I contributed financially. I expressed my opinion to others and had discussions with both those in favor and opposed to the matter." The North Carolina Court of Appeal stated that the commissioner's position, contributions, and activities prove that he had a commitment to decide the case in a particular way or had a financial interest in the outcome of the matter. Mandating refusal. The court held that the out, the court held that the petitioners were deprived due process, reversed the board's decision, and mandated issuance of the conditional use permit. Close familial, business, and other associational relationship. General Statute 160D 109 defines familial relationship as a spouse, parent, child, brother, sister, grandparent, or grandchild. The term includes the step-half and in-law relationships as well. In Harbor Baptist Church versus City of Charlotte, the court implied that a board member's coworker with whom he had worked for seven years was a close familial, business, or other associational relationship. Next couple of slides is dealing with the Board of Adjustment, but I'm just gonna go over them real quick. Quasi judicial. What is it? In quasi judicial hearings, the Board of Adjustment is acting as a fact finder, similar to a judge or a jury, and is making decisions based on applying those facts to the legal requirements of each case. A quasi judicial hearing occurs upon application for a variance or special use permit. What does it require? Board of Adjustment must keep a full transcript of the meeting and maintain a record of all evidence presented in the course of the hearing. The Board of Adjustment may consider, must consider the application, relevant supporting materials, sworn testimony, and all other relevant evidence. Hearing overview. Purpose of a hearing is to gather evidence and facts specific to the case. People can give evidence, but only after they are sworn in, affirmed to do so, and only on relevant material or competent. The Board of Adjustment must make findings that support their decision. It's a good idea to share the findings of fact with the applicant before issuing a decision. Written record of the hearing must include written findings, the facts that support them, and how any contested facts were resolved. And final decisions must be sent to the applicant and any other party who has requested a copy of the decision. Let's see how many more we got here, Board of Adjustment files. Uh, I've got a few more. All right, hearing procedure. To conduct business, the Board of Adjustment must have a quorum present, which is a majority of the BOA's membership. The BOA Chair manages proceedings by keeping order, managing the flow of witnesses' testimony and presentation of evidence, deciding whether to issue subpoenas, and overseeing voting and the hearing of motions. A complete record must be kept of the hearing with detailed minutes identifying witnesses and giving a complete summary of their testimony. Exhibits presented should be retained by the board and made a part of the case file. In some cases, the Board of Adjustment may need to compel production of evidence. In those cases, the Board of Adjustment is authorized to subpoena witnesses and compel the production of evidence. Any sworn witnesses who offers testimony in the hearing is subject to be cross-examined by the opposing party or any party who has standing in the matter. Board of Adjustment deliberates and decides based on substantial competent material evidence presented at hearing. Each finding of fact is reviewed and discussed, and a vote is taken. A final vote is then taken on the application. Mutually agreeable conditions can be placed with the approval. Conditions prescribed by the Board of Adjustment must be fair and reasonable and be land use related. The applicant shall be given time to comment on conditions proposed by the BOA. Last one about Board of Adjustment, it looks like. Focus on the relevant reliable evidence. The Board of Adjustment can only base its decision upon competent material and substantial evidence. Sources of evidence can include factual testimony, affidavits, the application, or expert opinion testimony. The Board of Adjustment may not base its decision upon irrelevant facts, unqualified speculative opinion, assumptions, or hearsay. All right, some key facts from this little presentation to remember. To act, there must be a quorum present. In other words, at least four members. If a quorum is present, the vote required is, for Planning Board, must be a concurring affirmative vote of a majority of the members present and qualified to vote. For the Board of Adjustment, for a variance, concurring affirmative vote of four fifths of all voting members, all eligible to vote, not just those present. Everything else, simple majority vote of all voting members. All eligible to vote, not just those present. Members shall not vote if the landowner of the property, subject to a rezoning petition or the applicant for a text amendment is a person with whom the member has a close familial, business, or other associational relationship. Members shall not vote where the outcome of the matter being considered is reasonably likely to have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact on the member. A member of any board exercising quasi judicial functions shall not participate in, in or vote on any matter in a manner that would violate affected person's constitutional rights to an impartial decision maker, such as member having a fixed opinion prior to the hearing, member who has had undisclosed ex parte communications, member who has had a close familial, business, or other associational relationship, or a member who has a financial interest in the matter. Failure to follow. Any appeal from the decision of the Board of Adjustment shall be to the Superior Court for Carteret County by petition for a writ of certiorari. I hope I said that right.
Certiorari.
Thank you. Say that one more time?
Certiorari.
Certiorari, okay.
What does that mean? Doesn't matter how you pronounce it, but I don't know what it means.
It's just a writ that they would have to do to, uh, to file appeal from the decision for the Board of Adjustment.
Okay.
Yep.
It's basically a discretionary review by the court and the court, uh, the Superior Court where the appeal is taken to, and they're asking for a decision to overturn. So they're, the Superior Court is acting similar to what the Court of Appeals would do.
Gotcha. All right, and it says the court may affirm, reverse, or remand with instructions. Original civil actions that seek declaratory relief, injunctive relief, damages, or any other remedies provided by law or equity to challenge the enforceability, validity, or effect of a local land development regulation. Civil actions otherwise authorized by law. Potential remedies could include punitive damages and attorney's fees. Note, in rare circumstances, local government board members may be held personally liable for acts taken within the scope of their administrative duties, although qualified immunity may sometimes protect them. So, um, before I get to this, um, I just wanted to say, I wanted to throw this together, at least to go over it, because I think that, um, even the Planning Board needs to, uh, know about what's expected of the Board of Adjustments, because the Board of Adjustments will handle, you know, the appeals made by some of your decisions or the commissioners' decisions as well. So. Does anybody have any questions? On this? Okay. All right, next, what I handed out to y'all earlier is just going over, um, the Planning Board 2.2.2 from our own Emerald Isle ordinance. That talks about, I'm not gonna go over the whole thing, but it talks about the creation of the Planning Board membership, the powers and duties, uh, consisting of making studies of the area within its jurisdiction and surrounding areas, determining objectives to be sought in the development of the study area, preparing and recommending to the Board of Commissioners a land use plan for achieving these objectives, developing and recommending policies, ordinances, and administrative procedures, advising the Board of Commissioners concerning the use and amendment of means for carry out, means to carry out, for carrying out the comprehensive plan, uh, reviewing and advising the Board of Commissioners on all proposed plats of land subdivision, reviewing and advising the Board of Commissioners on all requests of rezoning of properties, uh, reporting monthly to the Board of Commissioners, and performing any other related duties that the Board of Commissioners may direct, as well as, uh, conflicts of interest, which that kind of just goes, went over that a while ago, um, for a little bit there, and compensation. And then I wanted to top that off by, um, giving y'all just a copy of the current Planning Board contact list. So y'all can contact each other if needed and see when everybody's terms are expiring. Except for Kenny, that looks like he's served, what, 12 times now?
Well, my first term is only three months.
There you go. There you go.
I think.
Well, yeah, that's all I got for that.
Up to December, it'll be 21 years.
There you go. That's a lot of volunteer work.
Well, they told me it was a two-year term when I was appointed. But they keep adding time to my sentence for good behavior. So if I'm good, they give me two more years. The sentence made two more years every two years. Just, they voluntold me. It's not exactly volunteering, but anyway.
You volunteer, you love it.
Got nothing else to do. Um, next, next item?
All right, so.
Next item on the agenda is continuing business, Planning Department report, and Planning Board comments.
Yeah, so this is something I'm gonna do every time we have a Planning Board meeting. I want to be as thorough as possible and let the Planning Board know everything that's going on in the department. You know, uh, getting down to how many permits we did, code enforcement numbers. I like to throw in as much tables as possible, so you'll see it mine. It might be a little longer than in the past, because I like to do it, I like doing all that stuff.
Impressive. I like it.
Thank you.
Job well done.
All right, so, um, let's see here. I'm not gonna go over the whole thing. You guys have it, if you, you guys have any questions about it? Anything you'd like me to add moving forward?
Anybody?
When is our CAMA land use plan due?
Well, it was not necessarily due, so, um.
Or start, when do we start again?
I will be requesting, uh, from the, from the, um, Commissioners that, um, you know, just requesting that I'm able to apply for a grant coming up next year.
Okay.
Uh, it's called the RC CP grant. And what that is, is, um, it will help out in, uh, possibly funding a portion of our CAMA land use plan when we update it. So I'm already looking at that. What I would recommend, and I wanted to have it, I apologize to y'all again. I wanted to have each of y'all a copy to give you a printed copy so you can have one, because you should be bringing it to every single Planning Board meeting, since, I mean, all the, all the decisions are based off that CAMA land use plan. Because, and planning will worry about the UDO. We'll make sure it meets all the requirements to our ordinance, but the CAMA land use plan is y'all's baby. Um, and, um, but I would, I would look online, if you Google or go on our website and look for CAMA land use plan, it'll pop up and just kind of go chapter by chapter whenever you have spare time, uh, because it's eventually gonna make it there where we need to do a full CAMA update. And it just start making notes on things you guys see that might, you know, you might want to see changed in the future. And that's what I would recommend at this point. Same thing with the ordinance. I know I, I've been here a little over a month, but, um, it seems here we, we might do a text amendment every now and then. But, I mean, eventually might end up doing a whole UDO update. You never know, but, I mean, writing, constantly write notes, uh, on things you guys would like to see that, uh, changed.
Don't we currently have a UDO committee doing just that? Rewriting it?
Well, now the committee's been.
Yeah. Not that I've seen. But yeah, I'm, I'm hoping, um, that the CAMA land use plan will, at least we'll have a plan for the CAMA plan, uh, land use plan to be updated next year, early next year.
So, John, would the help come from NCLM, or what are you thinking there, obtaining assistance?
So, it, well, I can't get too deep into it, but if I, if I am able to apply for this grant, uh, we look at different companies that come in and help the towns. And we would have to make a choice on which one.
Okay. And you say funding for future stormwater projects. What about the ones that are on the books that aren't completed?
So that's, that's really up to, um, how the town wants to go forward with whatever we're offered. You know, it kind of goes off of what money we're offered and what we have to work with.
Okay.
So I'll get with Frank about that and, you know, our, our directors moving forward when that time comes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. But, um, you know, this month has been all about just coming in, meeting everybody. Uh, we didn't have a Planning Board meeting last month. Um, we don't necessarily need one every single month, but at the same time, we don't want to go too long without having one. We got newer members and, you know, I like to meet up and meet everybody like we did today, except for a couple. Um, and it's also, I guess our biggest goals in planning is to make things easier for our, our customers. Okay? Um, there's, there's a couple of things, and Greg can vouch for me. You guys can't see him on the camera. If you look at this on YouTube, he's in the back recording. But, uh, there's always constantly things we can do to, to make things better and easier for the customers. And that's, that's the type of person I am. I'm always striving for that. Anything we can make easier for our, our citizens, customers, stakeholders, our, um, you know, I want to do that. Also, um, I'm, I've started making, and you'll see it in the notes, a strategic plan for the Planning Department. I'm hoping in the next couple of months I'll have something to maybe present. Um, but I think it's always best to have a plan, uh, and I just want an updated one in the Planning Office. Another thing that, that's good to, to kind of shout out is, uh, up until this point, I guess, uh, Division of Coastal Management has been assisting with the CAMA permits. Uh, December 1st is when we're supposed to take them back on again. So our office will be doing those come December 1st.
On the miners?
Yep. Jump right in.
Yeah, man.
Yep.
Start flying away.
As always, there, and for whoever views this on YouTube, for any citizen that watches this, just know that there's, there's, there's a lot of code enforcement cases around the town. A lot of them, you know, in prior jurisdictions I've worked in, it's a little easier just because, you know, you send it to the owner, the owner will get it. Here it could be, you know, most of the owners out here, vacation rentals and such are in different states. Takes a little bit longer to do, but one by one, we're gonna clean up as much as possible. And I'm constantly working on it as well, so. And I'm gonna stop talking now, because I'll keep talking. Is there anything else y'all would like to add to this, uh, this report?
No. I think you're doing a great job.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Yes.
Does he start to your, uh, new job?
Uh, you just gotta jump into it. Well, yeah, it's all right. It's all right.
It's very nice, very good.
Oh, uh, John, how much?
Yes, sir.
Notice, you know, we, last meeting that we had, I mean, on the, the dead trees because of that blight that's gone through, um, there's still a lot of the trees that you see that are, that are dead. Not only are they an eyesore, but some of them can be dangerous. How much word have we gotten out to the public, uh, about this? Because I've, I've seen very few of them taken down, and I've walked the area.
Yeah, yeah, so it's all about, it's all about private property, right? So, I mean, you can, you could see it, but it's gotta be that private property only that turns it in. I know that, um, we, we've got quite a bit this week so far, and it's just Monday. Um, I think we got maybe, I think two today. We got a bunch last week. So slowly but surely, they're starting to be submitted. But, I mean, it's been posted on, uh, on Facebook, on our website, and we have them, every person that walks in to ask questions about it, we give them the paperwork there. So, thanks for that. We'll put it out there more. Yeah. So this week, we'll try to shoot it to different places so more people can see it.
With that, we move on to comments from the members of the board.
Scott, comment?
Nothing.
Happy to be here.
Scott, you want to tell us a little bit about yourselves?
Sure.
The newbie in the crowd.
Okay. I don't know how far back you want me to go, but I'll start kind of close to the beginning. My name's Scott Bookout. I live on Labalali Street. I have been in Emerald Isle approximately five years now, excuse me, six years now. We moved in 2019. I work for Blue Cross Blue Shield in North Carolina, from home, so I'm here. I travel to Durham monthly. Prior to that, I worked 18 years for Lockheed Martin in project and program management, serving Lockheed Martin Defense and Lockheed Martin Civil, supporting the Army Corps of Engineers, the Environmental Protection Agency, and NIEHS, National Institute of Environmental Health Sciences, and IT, and various contract work there.
What made you decide to move to Emerald Isle?
I had a college roommate at State who had a house nearby, and we rode jet skis at the point and partied at the Dairy Queen before the town really built up, and it just kind of drew me back.
Perfect. Well, welcome.
Thank you.
John, just thank you. This is great work and very informative. Appreciate it.
And thank you, Greg, again, back in the closet back there. Appreciate you, buddy.
Well, I'd like to welcome John Neville again. I had the pleasure of meeting with him and going over a lot of this stuff in advance. Impressive resume. How they get to Emerald Isle with resumes like that, I guess it's, you know, weren't that important. The other thing I want to say is, he mentioned that we are now YouTube stars. Just keep that in mind, even though we have nobody here. It's memorialized forever on the interwebs. You might want to dress nicer next time. We're not. With that, any other comments?
Can I say one more thing?
Sure.
So, I, just like a lot of other people, heard about the death that took place in Emerald Isle on Saturday at the half marathon. So, if it's okay with the Planning Board, I don't know, I guess we can just show, you know, I give my love and support and prayer out to the family members of this tragic event, and sorry it happened, and hopefully it never happens again. So I just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, let's say God just let her run her last race.
Okay, I got just enough time to get home for my Chinese dinner. Does we have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn tonight.
We made a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those favors, say aye?
Aye.
You're all invited for Chinese.
Thank you.
Well, not tonight, because we don't have enough. It's a lot of time. Thank you.
Thanks.
And turn off your mics now.